You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is December fourteenth, twenty twenty two meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Laporte County dot org.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming and joining in with us at the Michigan City Commission of Social Status of African American Males Board Meeting. Today is December fourteenth. Happy holidays also before we start the meeting. But I would like to call to order this meeting that is actually twelve oh three, December fourteenth, and we can start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. I hope everyone having a good holiday season. And we get in and get out of here real good. We don't have much on the agenda, but we do have some very important paperwork to get done. So we'll get to that on the agenda. So what we would do is do a roll call. Secretary, can you please do a roll call, Miss Commissioner Lee?
Commissioner Moore. President. Commissioner Millsap.
President.
Commissioner McCormick.
President.
Commissioner Cox.
Present.
Commissioner Fly.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Commissioner Conley.
Present.
Commissioner Benning.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hogan.
Present.
Commissioner Hurt.
Okay, we have a call, so we can get our meeting started. We have enough to start. First thing on the on the agenda, we would like to read the mission statement. We have to do that every month, every time we have a meeting, so ones can know what we're about and what we stand for. So I like giving it to Commissioner Hogan. He's really prompt with that. Do you have the mission statement with you, Commissioner Hogan?
I don't have it.
Oh, unfortunately. Yeah, I probably have to look on the phone. Commissioner, um, Bay, would you happen to still have it on you, on your person today? Oh, you know. Okey dokey. Give us one second. Secretary Lee is going to retrieve our mission statement for us, so we can get that read. I was even want to fill in the day, will okay? That's a good thing, right? Happy holidays, joyful seasons.
I don't have it.
And if we can't find the mission statement at the beginning right now, uh, maybe we can, uh, oh, we got it. Okay, Commissioner Hogan, thank you, brother.
The mission of the Indiana Commission on the Social Status of Black Males, Study the Social Conditions of the State's Black Male Population, Develop Strategies to Remedy or Assist in Remitting Serious Adversities, and Make Recommendations to Improve the Educational, Social, Economic Employment and Other Circumstances for Hoosiers. The Commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media, community, organizations, and members of the general public.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hogan. We really appreciate you for that. Can we start, get the November twenty two, twenty twenty two minutes, meeting minutes approved, or if there's any adjustments we need to be made?
Make a motion to accept the November twenty second. Maybe meeting minutes.
We have a motion in the second. Or approve of minutes. Can we get a vote?
Aye.
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 All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Get a treasurer's report? Commissioner Benny?
Yes, I did submit on yesterday the treasurer's report. Our balance is six thousand ninety eight dollars and ninety, ninety two cents.
Move to accept the treasure report.
Second. Would you repeat that again?
Okay, all in favor, aye.
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 We got a request.
Oh, requests. Yeah, okay, I didn't hear you, brother. The microphone right in front of you.
Six thousand ninety eight dollars and ninety two cents. I also submitted it by email.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, uh, before we actually get into the agenda, I want to encourage, uh, some of our members, please, join the subcommittees, so we can, um, with the new members, you probably ain't too aware of our subcommittees. We have like eight different subcommittees, well, at least six, right? Um, it'd be great if you guys can, or anyone can join the subcommittees and help participate in doing some of our duties and responsibilities. Okay, on next on the agenda will be new business. Under new business, we have the bylaws, the signing of the bylaws. Um, unfortunately, our liaison, Ms. Tillman isn't here. She's, um, unavailable for the holiday right now, probably making situations with her family if going out town, I'm not sure. But we're gonna bless that, and we're gonna say what these bylaws is. They, they can be signed, the amended bylaws that's being put into place, that have been placed into place. On the back of the bylaws is a signature page of all the commissioners that is on the commission at the time of our bylaws. And even if you wasn't on the commission at the time that we changed the bylaws, at the time that the attorney approved the bylaws and they were passed in, and the current board right now, who's on here, we have the right and, uh, is permitted to sign the bylaws. So when they go into filing later on in the future, and you look back, you can go and see amended bylaws and stuff, and you can see who was on the panel and who signed it. It's almost just like the legislation thing. You can just, uh, be privy to who's all on the board at the time of change. Okay, so what we're gonna, oh, that's one we'll pass around, because what we're gonna do, we're gonna pass the bylaws around, and it's totally your choice if you want to sign it or not. You're not forced. There's no harm in it if you do or don't. Me personally, I would like to sign it. I would like to be part of history and part of change. So, um, it's being passed around now, so we'll take a little moment out and get those signed and turn it into the clerk, and we can get this passed as brothers and sisters.
Brother President, uh, may I ask a question?
Yeah, you do have, is your mic able to turn on, or are you able?
He doesn't have it. He left it on.
I know it's so far out. Sorry about that.
No problem. Uh, uh, brother, uh, brother President, what is the bylaws consist of?
Oh, you have them in front of you, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah, that packet right there is the bylaws.
Does he have one?
He does. He has right there. Thank you.
Okay, I sent it via PDF on our, the email to bring it reviewed. But they already been changed. It's already, there's nothing more to be changed or amended. It's just the signing of us.
Chairman Fly.
Yes, you can. Yes, Commissioner Lee.
So these bylaws were enacted in February. If anybody is interested in having a copy of the, the bylaws before the change, I'll be glad to send them out by email, so you can do a comparison. Basically, the, the changes that were most substantial were the changing of our name to Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males and the qualifications to be, to actually live in the city limits. That was removed. Those were the major changes to the bylaws. Everything else basically stayed in place.
Thank you, Secretary Commissioner Lee, for that information.
Mr. Fly, once we get those signed, I think that it needed me to go to the clerk.
Okay. May, uh, yeah, thank you.
And thank you for giving us opportunity to sign it for those who all did participate.
Yes, sir. Commissioner McCormick, Vice President McCormick, I think that is, uh, absolutely all right to want to do it or not. Pastor Carroll, he's sick right now, and he called me and he said he wouldn't be able to attend, so he did reach out and let, let us know that he would be able to make it today. I told him I would let all you guys know, so I won't let him down. Okay, so I'll put this to the side where we took, you want to take this?
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner, Secretary Lee.
Okey dokey. Next on the agenda, we can go to old business, which I didn't put too much under old business, because, uh, we really didn't have too much, uh, lingering around, but these bylaws that was kind of hackling us. Um, if anyone on the commission want to bring up anything from old business that you think needs to be addressed, uh, feel free to do it now. We have a, a short agenda, and we're gonna be in and out of here, get back to our families for the holidays and stay in good sakes. Anyone within a opportunity, speak about anything on the old bylaws? I mean, uh, bylaws killing, old business. Okay, Commissioner Lee, I see your hand.
So in November, because we had a guest speaker, we suspended the remainder of our agenda. So there are two, actually, there's one item under old business, the appointed authorities. Uh, we actually voted in October to have the Laporte County, um, commission to be one of our new, uh, appointing authorities.
It was Laporte County Council.
Oh, thank you. Laporte County Council to be one of our appointing authorities. We have not composed that letter because of the language. And so that is something that needs to have a, a conversation with, um, our city attorney and our liaison and our vice chair and our chair, uh, to make sure that the language is clear. One of the things that was listed in the October minutes was that we just wanted to be able to send that letter out to the city council and, uh, direct quote, and let them work out the piece, um, and to send it to them and let them work out what our language is gonna be. We actually need to make a decision about what our language is gonna be. And we never did. There was a question on the floor, and I actually put the question on the floor to Mr. McCormick regarding what, um, who were we going to replace with the Laporte County Common Council? And the question was actually never answered. And then we had a comment from the city council president stating that we had, um, she referred to it as the legal committee, but actually it's the justice committee. Um, the, the, the just, yes, yeah, justice. It was actually justice. And so the problem with that is there are already three members on this board currently that are from justice, and that is Mr. Cox, Mrs. Benning, and myself. And so we still never came up with an answer of who we plan to, which authority. And that authority of if we, if we choose the justice, then that is actually one of the mayor's appointments, and he needs to be involved in the conversation.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, you may, Commissioner Lee. I mean, uh,
Um, I, I thought it was already understood that, uh, we, no one was ever talking about replacing anybody from criminal justice or a mayor selection. It was to replace minority health, because they stepped down. And they was put back in, um, pronounced, I mean, no one knew about it. Yes, and they put it, they put them back in, so I think that killed sending over to the council. Um, I'm not one hundred percent sure about that, but as I, I didn't even get a chance to answer your question, because the city attorney and Madam President, um, Deitch made it clear that, um, minority health was coming back. And as I stated in my, in the past, uh, we have people that don't come, they, they take, the appointing authorities are taking forever to appoint people to our council. We already gone, we already behind eight ball. Like it or not, we have elections next year. Some of us might, I might not even be here next year. A lot of us might not even be here, but the beginning of the year, we have to have, we have to appoint new office holders. And I just think it's totally unfair for any of us to do that under, until the new board is put in place, but those are the issues that I was bringing up in, um, and, um, Commissioner Lee, I'm sorry that you misunderstood or things went this way, but I thought, um, President, uh, from the council made it clear that they, they put their minority health back in here after eleven months. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. Um, did you have anything else, Commissioner, I see you finished your life, but if not, I'd like to answer you. Okay, real quick, I know last time I dragged out, I drug out a lot, talk too much, basically. But, uh, right now, what I want to say with, uh, minority health and, um, their appointment from city council back to the, our board, we have to set a precedent. And the precedent is when we receive letters, correspondence via email, via however, letter, we have to stand on that. We can't, we can't dangle, take back, pit back, or whatever you want to place it. Myself, I played, I stepped down from vice president via email. Um, I didn't put any affirmations on it to mayor's office anywhere, but this board made me stand on that. And they kicked me out, even though I want to come back and hold an office, because we didn't have a president, we didn't have a vice president. So out of consideration, I was like, well, I don't want to leave us abandoned. But I had a resistance, which I thought was a good thing that be able to step up until new elections come in two months. Well, we had resistance, and the truth is the truth, rice is the rice. I did it. So I handled my business, got down off of it and kept it moving. So in this situation with minority health, the, the letter that was received to the city council, and it wasn't addressed to any of us commissioners, but it was addressed to the city council, the mayor, and all of the other following appointments. And that letter was kind of, uh, disturbing to a certain degree. It was more than just stepping down. It was, um, it was antagonized towards us commissioners on the board, uh, explaining that we're off track and all of the following. And so with that being said, it was a very detailed letter, and it had strength in it, and it stood on what, what was said. It was firmly, you could read it, meant it. So what, by me being the president now, and probably shortly, I don't know if you're gonna keep me on January or not, I'm still gonna be here and support you guys no matter what we do, is how did we exclude all of that? How did we just exclude all of the non-appointed that they didn't want anymore? They didn't even want minority health even involved with us at all, not even a little bit. They didn't want them to be appointed authority. They didn't want to have our appointment sent here. It was perfectly understood. And eleven months without no appointment in that position to our board, which is give us staggered. You know, we were like everything filled, and, uh, all of our spots took in, and everybody doing what we're supposed to do. So we went eleven months with nothing. We didn't replace them with no one. You know, we talked about it, never did. So Commissioner Vice President McCormick had run in the Fort County Council as a possible, um, appointee for this board and commission. And, uh, for some reason, uh, after eleven months and after all of the detailed letters of stepping down, and I'm not harboring minority health, but you have to stand on what you say. You know, um, I think it's kind of childish action. But other than that, now that we were finna go with the Fort County Council replacement, all of a sudden, the letter of, uh, stepping down went away, all of the things that were said about us commissioners, not whatever was not doing went away, and they're back, and they're back. So that's either here or there, because council has already appointed them to be appointee. So with that, can't go back. We're not gonna fight it. But we do want to let you know, the next time anyone um, appoint an authority, give us an official letter and send it to the mayor of the council and everyone else, except us commissioners, because it was actually talking bad about us, but you can understand on that. We're not letting you back. I don't know if it's up to the president or our commission or the council, but we gotta keep it real. We're not letting you back until whatever guidelines or timeframe you have to have before you can be back. Okay, we off of that, that part. That was just my suggestion, my opinion on that. I didn't understand how I had to be held so accountable for my actions and my stepping downness. And then with something with so serious so far as appointing authority, don't even get a brief, uh,
Commissioner Fly.
Question.
The minority health wasn't the only group that didn't, that didn't do it either. I just think that we need to just, when those issues arise, we need to address it as a committee and demand change. And we need to change our, if we have to change our bylaws, then that's what the structure that we, that's there. By two thirds vote or whatever, we, we are able to do that. And I just think, again, the letters should be, we should be like, almost like the woman commission, right? The woman commissioner made, is made, commission is made up all women.
That's not true, sir.
Um, if I may, as I last look about a month ago, I just seen that you was placed on there. I didn't see no other males on there. But you can, you can correct me on that after, after I say this. I think that African American males, as Mr. Will Millsap said, we need to step up and take our place. We need to start setting better examples, including with, starting with me. We need to play our role. I'm fifty five years old now. A lot of us are, are up in age. We gotta be able to pass the baton to the younger generation of males. Because males do look up to us. A lot of us don't get the opportunity to sit on these boards. In the past, I didn't see too many of us on here. I didn't pay attention to this commission, because I didn't see it was doing nothing. And, um, I see that as, uh, very valuable to this community, and I hope that we don't just join something to try to run individuals away, but to bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Lee, did you have your hand?
Yes, so the, currently the women's commission, I do sell the women's commission. I was appointed by the League of Women Voters for Laporte County. But in the past, men have sat on that board. As a matter of fact, um, Mr. Fitzpatrick was the council liaison to the women's commission. And so it's not always been just women. And I, and I agree that this commission should have African American males on it, but we can't force people to join this, right? And we have to remember that we are a community, and we have to all work together. And when we get to the point where we can just work together and just do, because of, actually, the work of this commission should be done in the subcommittees. And then when we get to this meeting, all we do is vote on motions, seconds, have a vote, and move on. But we have spent so much time talking about stuff that don't even really matter and nothing, and I'm gonna be, I'm just gonna put it out here. Very few things have gotten done in this commission. I said that when I first got on this commission, and I was shot down, and people were, people said some pretty rude things to me. But as the year went on, I just did the year end report as your secretary. I did a year end report, and I can't see too many things that we've done over the course of the entire year. The most valuable thing that we did as a full commission was vote to be part of the citywide back to school. Right? And we came out and we supported that, and we did a beautiful job together. But our subcommittees need individually. And then we're supposed to bring that information back to the board. We're supposed to move along and vote. That is not happening. So, so the, so the next, so the next thing is part of old business. I want to go there, is that we, from our October meeting, our agenda was commissioner conduct and suspension. We actually took a vote, page nine of the minutes that we, that we, uh, approved last month. Page nine is the vote, right? And it says that we're going to, um, have suspension and a discipline conduct policy. We've not done that either. And so we vote for a bunch of stuff, and then there's no follow.
Point of what, point of what, one time, Commissioner Lee, not to, not to like cut you off or anything ran on. Um, the things that, that you're missing, Commissioner Lee, Secretary Lee, they have valuable, um, and, you know, they're right. You're right about it. But one thing we were, one thing we want to do, or I would not like to do, is to dwell in the past, and we don't have to spread dirty laundry out to, on, on, on a meeting, you know, at the meeting. So I don't know if it's dirty laundry or not, but what we will do is go forward from here, you know, and no one, and no one is, uh, responsible or accountable for some of the things we have passed or overlooked. You know, we, we as a group have to be responsible for the things that we haven't came back to address. But that's why we doing these things now, uh, getting these bylaws behind us, getting these elections and stuff behind us, so we can move forward with the things that we have voted on and want to continue on and make progress on. But before we could even get to any of those issues, we were having these things prohibiting us. You know, it was always coming up in this issue, and we always go back and retract, retract. So that's why we getting these bylaws signed, getting our elections of officers and rules together. And so by the beginning of the year, we get our elections going, we going straightforward. You know, for to sit here and try to, um, you know, not try, but just try to recollect and pick up all the brilliant things we may have done. I know for sure that we have done more than, um, mister I. You know, I've been on this commission of one of four to five years, stayed on the commission one year without being anything, just come freely. I want to be a part of change for a whole year. Never actually be a commissioner, never wanted money, anything. Um, but one thing about it is we gotta do it now. So whatever we didn't do in the past, we finna do it now. You know, so that's what matters. We finna get it going now. So all that baggage we had on our back before, you can leave it just like it is baggage. We don't even need to pit it out there no more, because we going forward. Um, hopefully, I can remain the president, because I have great intentions for this board. You know, um, not to mention it like that, but I have a great youth organization with a lot of black youth that would love to been in your employment games, um, be involved with the social status of African American males. They, they play a big part of over fifty youth. You know, less fortunate, poverty stricken, um, youth, low income, um, youth that really can abide and live, uh, do great benefit off of some of the things we might be able to offer. So we can just move forward from the baggage off our backs, you know, Commissioner. Commissioner Faymore, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Lee for bringing those issues out, up. But however, we do need to move forward, and we need to have a nominating committee so that we can, um, hold elections. Madam, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Faymore. Okay, uh, anything else that anyone want to bring up slightly quickly, briefly on old business, and then we can go to the subcommittee reports?
I do have one thing. So as we go forward, and we were talking about going forward, as we go forward, um, as we know, elections will be held in January. I recommend that we go through, that whoever is elected your secretary goes through the previous agenda to make sure that we've covered all the old business that we put on the agenda. Just, just make sure that we've covered it. And I would like to state now, I do not want any nomination to be your secretary for twenty twenty three. December twenty two, this is my last meeting as your secretary. I am not leaving this commission. I wanted to say it publicly. I am not leaving this commission, but I do not want to be nominated your secretary.
Okay, thank you for the heads up, Commissioner, Commissioner Lee. So that's all with old business. Let's continue on. You got, oh, no, we got.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner, uh,
Since, uh, Millsap. Yeah, since, uh, our Commissioner Lee brought that up, is it possible we can, uh, form the nominating committee at this time that would be under?
Yeah, that's great. Let's get some stuff.
I'll make, I'll make that motion, because right now, we already have her feeling. Okay, I made a motion, second.
I was hoping Brother McCormick would come back from the rest.
I think he was waiting to be a part of this. I think he's making a call.
Oh, making a call.
I'm assuming.
Yeah, I think you went to the restroom.
Okay.
But okay, what we'll do now is, uh,
This is a house.
We got a, uh, brother. Okay, brother Johnson.
I, I think, uh, Commissioner McCormick brought up, uh, a real reason concerning minority health. Uh, that's already in place, because Because you have the person in place now that will make that area. Uh, profitable and workable to the um. Social status African American social. And hopefully that we have all of the commissions. Work together to make that work because um. I've learned that when they are team, when, when we work as a team, we make everything work together. So I don't think we have that problem uh. Now, because you do have a portion in place for minority health. Thank you for the present.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner uh Johnson. Would you wanna say something, Mr. Cox, Commissioner Cox? He asked who was the person? I don't think minority health has replaced anyone yet. Johnson, I'm overlooking you, you know, brother, like you're close down there, right?
I think that's why I brought it.
Good seeing you again, brother, that's a good brother right there.
That's why I brought it up because.
Yes, we got.
Commercial uh.
McCormick.
Commissioner McCormick made that statement, and now we have it in place. Let's go on.
From now.
Make the agenda and go from there.
I'm with that, that makes sense to me. Okay, uh, I have Commissioner.
I just wanna make. You know, when I first. Got on this commission, I made it clear, I don't like messy stuff. And I like to do stuff decent and in order. I know that there are a lot of people on here that have a lot of different opinions, there are a lot of different personalities. But we have to be mindful that everybody has an input. Um, we, we have to get away from the defeated mindset, the defeated attitude. Um, we know we're gonna run into some obstacles, we know we're gonna have some challenges. But you know, if you're always having something dangling over your head, that's. Making you feel like you have a defeated mindset, you're always going to. Run into problems. I mean, you're gonna have problems, like I said, across the board anyway. So I ask each and every one of us to um. Reflect and take a look at your own selves when you're making comments, um. Because I know that sitting on this criminal justice committee and our, our end of the year report will reflect some of the things that we have done. And if you haven't sat on the board on, on this committee, you really don't know. Except for what we submit to you all. And I know every, each and every month I have submitted a report. And I know that we have met and I know that we have done some things. Um, so you know, actions speak louder than words. Um. Let us ask us to get out of our own way. And just understand that there are different personalities, there are different mindsets. And let's just get away from the defeated mindset and, and just move forward.
Thank you, Treasurer Commissioner Benny. I, I agree with that totally. I'm on, who's next uh for um? Now, now, I, I wanna keep talking, cause I learned, looked at the last meeting, I was rapping, 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 I ain't gonna do that. But this, this subject right here that we speaking on. Can we not rebuttal, too tough on it, but Commissioner McCormick, did you have your hand up, light up on it? Okay, can, can we kinda, we gotta understood that we need to move forward, that's all the understanding, okay? So hopefully we ain't finna go back and forth, that was, it was good statements we all made, we not finna make this into a. Debate back and forth, okay, we gonna move on, we, we got things established, we got our own paperwork to look, look behind and. Check on and see what was right and wrong. This isn't time right now to do all that. We have to talk about business up here, down, that we have a public involved and wanna know. And see what's our, uh, future missions and what we got in store for the future and the present. Um. The old business, I would like to strike that down now. Thank you, Commissioner Treasurer Benny, thank you, Commissioner Secretary. Um, Lee, thank you, Brother Vice President McCormick for your input, Robert Johnson input, everybody that inputted. But now we gonna get that defeated mindset or whatever we didn't do, or we did do. It's all out the window, we going strong now, man. January, social status is gonna be got it going on, right, Robert Johnson? Right on, brother. Okay, we gonna go ahead on to uh the subcommittees, man, we got.
There was a motion by Mr. Millsap and a second by Mr. Cox to form our nominating committee.
Yep, there was a motion in the second to form a nominating committee, so I got ahead of myself. I think it's them candy canes I've been eating. So we can call for a vote?
Mr. Chair. What an order, uh, historically, there's always been a three member nominating.
Right.
You can assign the three members. Or.
Okay.
We can vote, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, I would like to assign them, just so we can.
We still have to vote for the motion.
For the motion to do it.
Okay.
Bingo, keep me on my toes. Okay, can we get a vote for the motion and we have a motion in the second?
We can do all in favor, we can do.
All in favor, just say aye. Any opposed, it was a one nay. Okay, so we gonna uh do um, now, what was this called, a nominating? Okay, now for the public, the exact thing of a nominating committee, just to let you know. Um, I'm gonna let uh. Someone else address that exact thing that a nominating committee do, just for the public information. Would you like, Mr. Secretary or anyone else? Mr. Millsap, would you like to explain to the public what a nominating committee does?
Uh, they uh take uh anyone who's interested in being uh. Elected officer and relay it at the next meeting so we can hold on it. Usually historically, it's been three members. The chair would take volunteers or assign. And so at our next meeting, uh, we should have the slate of officers. One, two, three, three.
Okay.
I have a question. I, I, I actually didn't vote. Um. So you're saying, and I know what a nominating committee is, so you're saying though that. Anybody that is interested is going to have to come to the committee to express their interest. Instead of us doing what we've done in the past.
Exactly. And that nominating committee will start the new year off with the slate of officers, which we've all will vote on.
Okay, so you know, people's minds change and their, their desires change like the wind sometimes. So if we have a slate of officers, um. And a person decides later on that they want to hold a certain position, then what do you do? Because you've already had that slate of.
Well, they could decline the nomination.
No, I'm saying if they decide that they want to run and you've already had your slate of officers.
They could from the floor, the chair can take nomination from the floor.
Okay, I'm saying nay.
But they have now until our next meeting to show their interest with the three member.
Okay.
I'd like to reverse my vote.
Okay, will you? If I may, I'd like to reverse my vote to as a nay.
Clarification, when you said reverse a vote, you don't want a nominated to know?
Well, I think myself personally, I think that um. Three members to come to, have to have a person come to the three member nominating, even though it was history and historical. Um. I, I just think it's an extra step. Uh. It is, it's not really, really um. A necessity, because it does the same thing without it. Um, we come to the floor, see who I wanna be nominated right then and there, then we. We carry on, I, I don't, I don't see anything special that's nominating these three members will be holding. That's, that's really a, a difference maker. Or making anything smoother or less smoother or not, I just, I just think it's an extra step, extra. Initially and specifically to a nominating three people, you know, their names and stuff, but it's just, I don't know.
Madam, for the record.
Saying that they wanna be, they wanna be nominated.
Mr. Chair, it's just a, a process, a structure at most boards, but once again. You're, you're the president.
Oh, I don't make the vote, I'm only one vote.
No, I'm just saying if you want the structure.
But do you feel like we had a problem with the way we spend any nominations? Oh, Commissioner uh Moore, let me let you go, I speak to way too much.
Normally, when you have a nominating committee, they actually a nominating committee can, contacted different members. And see who wants to be president, vice president and chair. It makes it go so much faster. When you actually have the meeting, because you already have a slate of officers that have already agreed. That they wanna serve in those positions. And so the nominating committee makes this, tells you. Who has agreed to um, to be in those, in those, and then you can still take. Nominations from the floor in case somebody has changed their mind. But it goes so much faster, cause you already have your slate of who has agreed that they want to be in those positions.
Okay, okay, I, I hear understanding, Commissioner McCormick, Vice President McCormick.
Yes, if, if I can point to everybody, point out. If you just go to our bylaws and just go to page five.
Yeah.
And, and just go directly to article four, it's clear how we should hold our elections. Again, I'm not gonna vote to amend these bylaws anymore. We shouldn't change them, the bylaws are there, it tells us how we have to have our elections. And, and to a degree, I believe that Mr. Millsap may be correct, I'm not for sure. But it, it is up to the pleasure of the, of the president. And, and it should, it says clearly that we have to have this done, uh, the first meeting of January, we have to have this. And you just called it out, anybody wants to be president? Anybody wants to be uh vice president? And you just, it, it's, it's the same process, we just doing it. I just think that um, my experience with nominating committees hasn't been always well. Uh, I just think that we should just follow our bylaws. This is our, this is our roadmap and we shouldn't deviate from it, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice President McCormick. Okay, with the nominating committee, we have people that want to reverse um, like their. Okay, so what we are do, we are do a roll call vote on this, and if it's up to me, if the president have any uh. Conjunction in this. I actually think that it's uh historical, been done historically, that's great, but I don't see we been having any issues. Uh, when it comes to someone wanting to be on some, uh, and not being able to have the time to say so. So.
I'm just saying that.
But it's just.
It's, it's structure.
Right.
I mean, you know, if you're a board, function as you please, but there still is a structure. It's your call.
Yeah, you right, you right.
It's your call.
Yeah, we, it's, it's no, it's. Do, do the president have any uh standard just to say no, anyone?
There was a motion on the floor in a second.
Let's go, all right, right on. All right, can we start the roll call, uh, Secretary?
Let's you repeat, what is that, the motion?
So the motion on the floor from Commissioner Millsap was to form a nominating committee. Um, after discussion from Commissioner Moore, there was a second by Mr. Cox. Roll call vote.
Um, can we pause for a second, Mr. Cox has changed his thing around, so there's no second. Okay, let's go, let's go, bro. Yeah, I got you, let's go.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes, to a nominating committee.
Commissioner Millsap.
Yes, to a nominating committee.
Commissioner McCormick?
Nay.
Commissioner Cox?
No to any committee.
Commissioner Fadmore?
Nay.
Commissioner Lee? Yes, Commissioner Conway?
I'm going to abstain because it doesn't matter to me either way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benny? No. Commissioner Johnson?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Hogan?
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Hurt? The vote carries.
Vote closes.
No, they were four, four.
Okay, what was the yeas and nays?
So they're, they failed.
It failed, okay. So what we do now, since it failed, I understand you knew commissioners kinda abstain, that was great. You don't know too much about, really, you know, I guess.
Carrying.
So, so we good, the motion we don't have. Okay, right on, Lee. Motion failed, nominating committee has been struck down, but we're not, we're not harboring, it's no problem. We ain't had no problems with nominating uh any officials. So continue on, right?
Yes, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just so that we're all on the same page. After the first of the year, our first meeting. Anybody can just say I wanna do it.
Decent and in order.
And we gonna make sure, yes, that's the key right there. Yeah, we got it going on, uh, Vice President McCormick. We gotta go ahead and number one, little smile and laughter, let them know we all joyous. God is good all time. Okay, we continue on on the agenda. Let's get down to the subcommittees. Subcommittee uh. You have any information from the education, which is I am, I am on also and Commissioner McCormick, and we still are waiting for um. Another appointee from the school so we can, W, right? Bingo, let's get it, hurry. All right, give it to Commissioner McCormick, Vice President McCormick.
Anybody that would like to join the subcommittee for education, please. Let, Mr. Hurt, can we put Mr. Hurt down? Is there anybody else that wanna join, let us know. Um.
We'll be there.
Yep. Okay, and Mr. Cox is, as well. Thank you guys for joining and uh we will call for a meeting here before the end of this month. And just be with me and just tell me what time good, cause we need to make ahead of that, that chair, of that party. Um, I just wanna say that we are going to finalize our field trip, which we went and got to four thousand dollars for. And we have to have a vote um. To go to the Desaba Museum in Chicago. Uh, and I also want to, the people that's viewing us and watching us. Um, I just wanna say that these school board seats are very important. Some of the things we've been doing, I seen Ms. Commissioner Moore, um, outside of her, I mean, I think we go to the. These board meetings a lot. Um. See like when she's there, I'm there or vice versa, anyway, we at these board meetings. It's not enough of us in the black community participating. Uh, we have a couple of black members on the board. But that's, they're, they have a different position and title as we in the public. I still have two kids that's in the system right now. And I just wanna say it is crucial. That we find candidates or help candidates and educate people into running for our school board. Don't make no just what, what party affiliation you are with, it doesn't even matter, it's nonpartisan. We need to get out uh and become a part of the boards, cause it's crucial. Things are changing so rapidly and the way that our kids are being um disposed of and not being, and not given any opportunity. To have um. A meaningful relationship with the school system, their books, with their friends, they are just, one incident, they out the door. We gotta change that and we need a better alternative setting than what we have right now. So I encourage everyone out there. When the school board seat come up in two more years, a lot of them come up, I think it's four of them, please be a willing participant and run, thank you.
Yes, sir, Commissioner uh Millsap.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner McCormick, isn't there a grievance procedure that uh parents can go through or it doesn't exist?
I'll let Ms. Miss.
I don't know, cause.
Ms. Moore? You can answer that, Ms. Moore, Commissioner Moore.
Um, there's a grievance procedure, but. The average person don't understand it and even if they try to understand it, they don't, it's not successful. The parent does not have a, a lot of say so, the parent. Um.
Shameful.
It's a waste of time. But also, um, we definitely need people to uh run, uh, the parents. Are not. The parents are not um doing what they need to be doing to keep up with what their. Child is doing in school. Um I even have a relative that uh is in high school. That has four great four points. And the parent was unaware that her child only had four.
Communication.
These, and what she's saying, Mr. Millsap is absolutely correct. We follow the chain of command, which we go to the building principal first, right? Um most of people are out of touch. They're young, they don't look like us. Um they see some of the people that's causing problems, a problem, let's get rid of that problem, then we won't have no more problems. But as we can see, that's not working. Then we leave them to the street. So when you say grievance process, it doesn't exist. If one does exist, it has no no teeth. It is nothing there. So we need to combat this problem. And it takes us talking about it and that's the starting business and we'll pick back up on this later.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Um I'm also on the education and briefly, because we gotta go fast. I do wanna say. With by youth, I'm the president and founder and we have a lot of kids in there that goes to the AK Smith uh school. And uh when we in there, we uh I always give them time to speak about what happened in school and even with their daily lives. And a lot of them informed me that they had a one right at the beginning of the year. You know, at the beginning of the year, you coming off summer, you got to get back into the school vibe. You know, at the beginning of the year, one little tiny mishap in school had expelled them and sent them to the AK Center. Smith Center to for schooling now. And I said, well, did they give you a second shot? Did they try? It's like, no, they sending sending you straight there, you know, and I thought that was unfair. You know, not, I said, that's a long time, be at the beginning of the year and say the whole year. You know, like you can't get better, get you a reprimand and then let you back in regular school. You know, everyone knows Dr. Knack, the AK Smiths and nothing, but ain't nothing like being in regular school. Around your peers and your, you know, the learning, you know, factor, all of that. And so right out the gate, they getting labeled as mentally as. Unfit to be in around other kids and their peers for a mistake or whatever behavior problems. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Yeah, I had one point to make. What I found was happening is that a lot of times, these kids who get expelled at the beginning of the year. Is because those administrators are still thinking about things they did the previous year. Whole lot of days and they couldn't because kids can change. Or even worse than that, they look at the family. Well, this kid's older sibling was was a troublemaker. Damn true, I'm not giving this kid any bricks.
Good point, brother Cox. Okay, we uh anybody on education one time before we go next subcommittee, we got five minutes, we running real good. Um next uh.
I do have one question. Uh Mr. McCormick stated that the field trip had been finalized for the Desaba Museum. Can you please submit that information so we all?
I never said it was finalized. I said that we need to meet so that we can finalize it.
Yeah, that's good. That's why we speak and have a mouth so we can get in same ground level. Okay, uh with that field trip, it's gonna be amazing for these youth. I can't wait. I wanna go. I hope they let me go. Okay, we get to hell. We gonna squeeze past. Can we go to you, Ms. Lee?
So the House Subcommittee report for year end was submitted to the Commissioners this morning. So we did the back to school rally and then we did. The Soup for the Soul, which was on November the eighteenth of twenty twenty-two, was a partnership between Health Link, Minority Health Coalition and the Michigan City Housing Authority. And Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Michigan City. The Michigan City Housing Authority hosted Health Link to provide COVID vaccine boosters from eleven AM to twelve noon. Bethel AME Church members prepared soups and chilis that was served from eleven to one PM. And the Michigan City Commission of African American Males Commissioners Health Subcommittee Volunteers were Pastor Johnson and Belinda Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, Commissioner Secretary Lee for that report. Anyone else wanted to speak on health? Um I know you come from minority health uh Commissioner Robert Johnson. Would you like to be on that subcommittee? Oh, you ask? Oh, there you go. Let's get it. Do you have anything you wanna say about the health buy, brother?
But the president, it went well. Super well. Uh only the only other thing, we did not have the total community to work. But other than that, it went well and hopefully next year. We can do it even better next year.
Great job, Commissioner Robert Johnson. Good way to jump right in and work and let's go.
And the secretary did a wonderful job of reporting.
Okay, okay, nothing wrong with tapping each other on the back. That's what it's all about. Okay, can we uh anybody else real fast on the health? I'm trying to get us all in on the subcommittee, get order and we out of here. Okay, can we go to employment?
Mister Chair, real quick, uh we held the workshop. It was held in the ELC Room, December fifth, one thirty. Zero attendance. We were very disappointed. Pat Harris, President of Michigan City, who we partnered with. Yeah, zero attendance. We attribute that to. Yeah, the churches uh did their advertising. Evidently wasn't enough. So we're gonna do it in the spring.
Yeah, I know you and Ms. Pat Harris and even Ms. Commissioner Hogan and everyone that you guys put a little bit, a lot of effort in, I mean, you know.
Which is why I'm very disappointed. However, I'm not giving up. We're doing it in the spring.
Thank you, brother Millsap. But I just got one quick question for you. Where do we, where did uh? We publicize that at or where did we go to uh explain it and give it to the public or the people that that is attracting?
Michigan City, uh Chapter IBE, they did theirs and uh we sent those flyers out to all the churches. They put them on their Facebook page. And of course, our program.
It was in newspaper also.
Who else? Uh Calco TV.
Okay, what age group limits were those?
We didn't, it was open. Restrictions. We knew we were in trouble the day before. There was no registrations because we requested a registration so we can have a count for the refreshments. So.
I was gonna say, did you think about uh for when you do it in the spring? Have you thought about um? Since it's already kind of been not uh really active in the community. Have you thought about no registration? Just tell them, come on, come and register when you get here.
No, the doors was open. We just wanted to count on.
I don't know how many, yeah.
Uh refreshments. Like I said, we're gonna do it in the spring again.
Okay, I'll be more in tune with you guys too, because I I'm sure I can reach out to our inner city. I didn't I didn't participate or acknowledge it advanced or anything. I'm sorry for that.
All right, thank you though.
You are. Commissioner Millsap, this is impossible. I mean, that we can test basis with the schools in the city. As as a uh point of reference so that you won't have that disappointment in the spring.
Fine, no problem. All of the doors open. We're not closing any doors. It's just that I think, in my opinion, the job economy now in our community. There's no hiring signs throughout the city.
Lots of city.
Well, we got four or five youths that's begging for a job right this minute, asked me yesterday. And one thing I want to say fast.
First of all, I'd like to just apologize to Mr. Hogan and Mr. Millsap. Uh I was in Florida and I I didn't put, I didn't do my part. And we could, I could have made sure that it was on my Facebook page and also on the social status page. And that will not, I will not drop the ball again. I will totally apologize to everyone here. I didn't do my part and and um and I'm sorry for that, but the next time I promise you, I will do more than my share.
No problem and I. However, uh the point I was trying to make is. Uh there's uh now hiring signs in every business on Franklin Street pretty much. So I mean, the jobs are there, but our goal was to groom the people who shine better during the application process. So whether or not you had a job is irrelevant, but if you wanted to tune up, to be prepared to be a better candidate. Which is what our purpose was. So and it always will be. So we'll do it this spring. See you guys this spring.
And briefly, I just wanna just uh let you know, Mr. Hogan, I feel that I do owe you an apology. Because I seen your program. We was, we started, I seen you put in work. And people need to see what you put together. Brother, you've been doing a great job. Uh for us. Uh it did start that way and we, it's amazing how we come together as mans and see how we can change each other's attitude about one another. And I appreciate you. Thank you.
So we're gonna regroup and try again this spring.
And I will MC say real fast, I'm like, oh, I wanna talk. Okay, this, I wanna say with the you. That I have, well, that I have, the community has, a lot of them, you know, we we emphasize training for. For kids and youth before they get a job or actually really get into the workforce. But to be honest, that's a great thing to do, but um. We uh have to take in consideration with some of our young youth that especially I deal with in the low income, poverty stricken areas. They need money now. And uh they take care of themselves. Not say they don't have a mom and parents, but. The living standards, they have to take care of themselves and buy the things themselves. If they can't reap, parents can't do it and paying all the bills, you know, so. Um even though the training is great and all of those things, they should also try to make sure they get somewhere where they get a wage out of it. If they're old enough, because they really do need the money.
Go ahead, uh Commissioner Hogan.
What we offer some sort of like additional service to it, like um. We help them with the application and bring in the application, whatever they have, at least one of us or two of us sit down with them. Go through it together, or even like, I originally wrote the program more so for adults. We can help them with resume. Just sit down with them and individually kind of walk them through the process. What are your strengths? What are your weaknesses? Give something, something else that will uh entice them to come through the program.
Yeah, if you remember that last meeting with Madam President Harris was here, that was one of the sections ending. So uh that base is definitely covered.
Got a great program put together there, you got. Okay, Ken. Yeah, and kudos to Pat Harris. Yay, we watch you. We with you, Pat Harris. Okay, we get on to um, let's go to criminal justice. I'm on that subcommittee, but I'll delegate it down to Commissioner Benny. And uh Brother McCormick, we all on that subcommittee and Brother Cox.
The uh report, it speaks for itself. We're piggybacking backing off of uh what the education report said. In collaboration with the um Education Subcommittee, we are. Um gonna be meeting by the end of this month to discuss and finalize the field trip to um the Desaba Museum and Educational Center.
I'd just like to add to that uh. If you wanna join us, Mr. Hurt, you're born and welcome. Mr. Johnson, you're more than welcome. Uh I just wanna say that uh. None of this would be possible without your hard work, Stacy. I greatly appreciate it. I know sometimes we don't never say that, but I truly appreciate the hard work that you put in. It's easier for people to stand on the inside and say that the insiders aren't doing nothing, they're not doing their part. But that's not, that's far from the truth. We can't, we can't, um we couldn't do this without you. And I I don't know, I don't know what it takes to please others, but. You have did more than please the majority of us. And I I just say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Of our hearts.
And Mr. Cox as well. Mr. Cox had gave us an input, a very valuable input that we didn't have. He has wealth of knowledge that is not being totally utilized, but it's going to be the next time around. But this brother has taught me so much. And sometimes it get discouraging. Because you always get reminded by individuals about how 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 um how they feel about you. But we gonna let that part go. Mr. Cox, I wanna thank you as well.
I thank you also.
And you too, Mr. Fly, and we gonna. We gonna do better. Thank you.
Yep, I'm with that and I'm uh I'm on criminal justice too. I just wanna say um my part in that is. Let's be all understanding, you guys, that we are have made progress within the. Even the last year. At one point in time, we hadn't had subcommittee meetings in years. So you know, that alone, I having a meeting and reports done at each meeting is a big jump. You know, so everyone is trying to participate with these subcommittees and bring something to the table, high or or low, you know, so. Let's let's understand that we hadn't had any subcommittees meetings in the past years for over some years. And if we did, it was spacelessly and things of that nature. So that alone is bringing us together. And every subcommittee has met since uh our newly board and our newly timeframe has met. No, I don't know, been consistent, but they have met and that was a big jump from none in four years. You just wanna say something, Robert? I mean, Commissioner Josh?
Commissioner Frye and President, I'd like to be a part of that committee.
Great, great, right on, brother. You chalk you right on in there.
And the reason why I wanna be a part of that, because I am a former uh probation officer. For the city of New Orleans. And uh I did a lot of footwork for uh low poverty kids. I served the, what we call the Night War area in New Orleans.
Oh, okay.
And uh. The seven, eight and nine war in New Orleans are three of the worst wars in the city.
So you was in the trenches.
I like to work on that uh um subcommittee.
Bad, bad to have you. I'm sure Ms. McCormick.
Yes, we welcome you.
So we'll pick a chair for education when we have our meeting, McCormick, Ms. Vice Chair. For education. Uh we'll pick our um chair, uh okay, okay. Okay, let's get on to the next last subcommittee, which is social factors.
Yes, um Social Factors Committee, actually, uh Pastor Williams was the chair. I was working with her with the social factor. And I would like to say that in the past, the Social Factors Committee has always been a part of the MLK Breakfast that's. Held in January, which has taken a different turn this year. And we've also been a part of the Black History Month Committee. As a matter of fact, the that committee came out of the. Social status of African American males. And we have met and we've also always been a part of the Back to School Rally. Social factors through uh Michigan City Commission. Okay, so with the um Dr. Martin Luther King, before I do that, I do wanna do this part. Um the Michigan City um black businesses are doing a um. Quanza Celebration at the Hope Building the last week in December. All the activities will be at the Hope Building uh the last week of December. They will be having um starting Monday, December the twenty-sixth. They will be having arts and craft every day. They have arts and crafts daily from two to four PM. They will have community resources from four to six PM. They will have daily speakers on the principles of Quanza from five to five thirty PM. They will have networking and refreshments at five thirty. They will have music, drummers, dancers. Saturday, they will have a community bazaar. And they'll have Michigan City Soulsteppers and line dancing. Sunday, January the first, they will have Sunday Old School Church. They will have community gospel choirs and praise dancers and a family style dinner. And they have sponsors, uh Denise Ship was the one that sent me this information. They have sponsors for these events. And she says she's still accepting sponsor money if anybody wants to aid towards their uh towards the sponsorship. And that would be the for the week of Quanza and uh different, she has different community organizations taking each one of the days. To uh represent and um so Monday.
That's great. So that would be the whole week of Quanta that every day you got.
Every day.
Is there a flyer out for that already to either put it on our page or we can put?
There is a flyer out. I will attempt to send that to everybody at the end of the uh our meeting. It'll be from December twenty-sixth to January the first, twenty twenty-three. At the Hope Program, two 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 McClellan Avenue, Quanza Celebration for the Community. In reference to the MLK Breakfast, um Don Batcock and his. And his committee has taken over, so they will not be a MLK Breakfast as in the past. They're doing Remembering the Legacy, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. And um, their sponsorship levels, the lowest sponsorship level is a thousand dollars. The Social Status Commission, we used to do the hundred dollars um, uh, presentation, but. The lowest is, so I will pass that flyer around. I will send that to you guys by email. I do have it on email. The Black History Committee has met, so um, I can just give you some save the dates. Um, uh, February the eleventh is gonna be the Quiz Bowl. Right now, we're gonna try to, we haven't found a location for it. The Gospel Fest is gonna be February the nineteenth. Um, it's gonna be at the Salvation Army. We still not sure if Essence Rio is gonna do the Indiana Black Expo that they normally do um, the third uh, Saturday. Uh, we're gonna have a health and job fair, uh, February the eleventh. We're still looking for locations and they're gonna still do the talent show. Which has always been awesome for the youth in Michigan City, the last Sunday in February. And uh, we, the old uh, Performing Arts, Elson's Performing Arts Center. Is where they plan on having that. Uh, the brunch would be February the fourth, but that's gonna be by um, invitation only. So they're still working on, on that. So those are some save the dates for the Black History Month and for asking all churches and. Organizations that are having programs during Black History Month, please get in touch with um. Marty Cor- Corley, the chairman of the um, committee. To let us know what you have and we'll add your things on the um. Brochure. We're getting the brochure together. We'll have, hopefully have the brochure together by the end of January.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. I was looking, I was like, yes, Mr. Moore with all that information, who we so behind? But okay, we go to Brother McCormick, real quick, I just, I just throw back, I, I didn't even, I. Social Factors, I thought it was just Miss Williams and myself on there. And we've been speaking, I didn't, I didn't even notice. Miss uh, Miss Moore, could you please arrange a meeting time so we can have a meeting? So we can meet, our subcommittee can meet and uh, I think it's only just me and you on that one. Anybody welcome to join us? It's only two. I'd like to entertain him, uh, to tell you that, join you guys. Cause also I want to say that I almost forgot that five high youth services is having our fourth annual Christmas giveaway. It's gonna be at the Hope Center also, that's fly high headquarters where we located and operating out of. On December twenty-third, our fourth annual Christmas giveaway. Um, the whole community is invited. We feed you, um, give you gifts, good music. And uh, usually we ascertain around about seven, eight thousand dollars worth of variety of different gifts, brand new. And it's all good, anyone is uh, able to come. But the gifts are for the youth of any size ages, it is gifts for adults and grandparents. But if you find a gift for them, so be it.
What time?
December twenty-third, right. Hope Center at the, you said where is that?
What time?
Said one. Starts at one and two is gone, but one to four. And then Commissioner, uh, Brother, um, Hogan.
Make a motion that we. Get the commissioner round table so we can get to public comments. Yeah, we have somebody waiting for public comment.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, everybody, yeah. Bingo, let's go. No names, uh, all right, ain't nobody name? Nobody name. Okay, great. Um, we go skip call order and convince around table, go straight to public comment. Um, do we have anybody with us today that like public comment?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalovic from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I have a few things I very wanna briefly talk about. First of all, for future reference, you know, I have a, I've always attended a lot of meetings and watched a lot of meetings online and on TV. Under Robert's Rule of Order for a motion to pass, you always need to have a majority of the voting members present for it to pass. You just had your uh, vote to have the nominating committee, the number of you abstained, but you voted yes. In order for that resolution to pass, you needed six yes votes. Uh, the abstention vote, it would equal to a no. So actually, that, that uh, that, that resolution should have failed. Uh, you need to be aware. Oh, did fail? Well, the same thing was to not to put on a, a, a member from the common council a few meetings ago. Uh, you know, that was only like a, a, a four to, like a four to three vote and two members abstained. You didn't have the majority for that, for that to pass. So that should be thrown out too. Yep, there's uh, eleven members present today, so you should have had six members for that to pass. Um, secondly, I wanna make you all aware, just a little FYI. And this is coming up right around the corner, the under section two dash five four seven of the Michigan City Municipal Code. Which establishes the commission on the social status of African American males. Uh, you're all required, you're required to give a report to the common council at the first meeting in March. Uh, all these times that I've been watching the common council meetings, that's, the commission has never gone up and given their report. So you're, you're, you're a violation of the ordinance. Uh, thirdly, I wanna spread a little good holiday cheer on something. I wanna read, um. I just got a little prepared statement to make. Um, I just wanna say the plans were unveiled at last night's Michigan City Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. For the construction of a brand new thirty-five thousand square feet La Porte County Boys and Girls, Girls Club Facility. The facility is going to include a gymnasium, cafeteria and several classrooms. The facility is going to be built on a vacant twelve acre parcel land. Just south of the former Michigan City YMCA property on Cool Spring Avenue. Tunnel Blank Construction will be the general contractor for the project. Now other than that, I just wanna wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Festive Kwanzaa. And peace be with you. Thank you.
Happy.
Too, Tommy. Uh, uh, motion to entertain, motion to adjourn, oh, was there any uh, anyone else in public comment?
Hand up there?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, this meeting hasn't been adjourned, you guys. Good job. Happy holidays. Let's get it.